We'll call the Boone County Council meeting to order. Let's all please stand and we'll plead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is the approval of the May fourteen minutes. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, is there a motion?
Some move.
It's been properly moved, is there a second? Second. It's been properly moved, a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, same by saying aye?
Aye.
All aye, all opposed, same sign? Thank you. Our first order of new business is the, with Nick Parr, the new ordinance amending the percentage of allocations for the HVH, MVH, excuse me, MVH?
I can speak to this a little bit. Nick and I have discussed this ordinance to help cover for the operations side of the street department. And the, when you talk about the MVH funds, you have a restricted amount, but you have to have fifty percent. Your calculations were ninety-ten prior to this, and so when you take that calculation and then this new percentage that's in front of you today, the fifty-five, forty-five, you still are okay with that fifty percent for the annual contributions. And working with the auditor's office, that fifty-five unrestricted, forty-five restricted from this point moving forward is what's going to be needed to cover the expenses out of next department. And so that's what we created. Next year, when we come to January, you're gonna have to create the budget again on this ordinance and the split, so we'll have to be at least at fifty-fifty at that time. I think there's probably gonna be some work with the auditor's office to really determine where and how you're gonna cover some of the funding. I think some of it's gonna have to come from the general fund moving forward, but this gets us, this should get through the rest of this year with the MVH funds to cover the expenses that are in the budget. I know that we did this percentage, we were working and finalized this at this weekend, but my recommendation to this council would be, this calculation is based upon if we pass this today, so I would recommend the suspension of the rules to consider our first reading and pass it today. Otherwise, we may have to do another calculation if we wait until next. Have any, any questions?
We're all right there. Nick, keep going for a second. I know there's been a lot of back and forth. Thank you both for your work on this. I've been trying to keep up with this. Council members, does anybody have any questions on this? Because it's another back and forth of, well, we have to suspend the rules, so make sure we understand that, but just the adjustment. I don't think when we go to the budget workshop, we'll maybe explain it more, but there are four funds that, Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, we'll be able to pull from to adjust this for next year, but I just want to make sure everybody's clear on this, so that when, when we suspend the rules, we're gonna move this forward, get it funded for this year, but then next year, we will be able to adjust it, so I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
I do have a question, if I may.
Go ahead.
Fifty-five, forty-five percent, what is the reason next year they'll change it to fifty-fifty?
Well, the statute requires that your MVH fund is split at the very minimum, fifty percent in the restricted, which goes towards the construction maintenance of the roads themselves, because that's kind of coming from the state. And so you're going to have to have that at least at fifty-fifty next year. Whatever you find out through your budgeting period, we can adjust it more, but there's gonna have to be a change back to fifty-fifty.
Thank you.
A clarification, we didn't budget fifty-five, forty-five. That's not what, what we had was budgeted about sixty-seven percent out of the restricted side, thirty-three percent out of the unrestricted side. But we've been distributing the funds as we receive them every month, ninety-ten, like we were last year. So when we do the budget, we have to adjust this ordinance
There you go.
in January, because we get the distributions monthly.
There you go.
But we've been spending it as our budget was approved.
Yeah.
Just distributions were off from our spending. So that's the, we could talk about it in budget time, and then we have to do this ordinance early in the year to get the distributions going into the fund correct. It's all one fund at the end of the day.
Yeah.
So we're not upside down, there's enough cash to pay all bills. The problem is, the state restriction, state legislation said fifty-fifty, or you could put more in the restricted side, and that's what we were doing, was more in the restricted side, and then we started spending on the other side. So fifty-five, forty-five is actually to correct the first six months of distributions that we've already received, or five months that we've already received. So now we gotta get more going into the other side to be able to balance it out.
It's more balancing than anything.
That's why it's fifty-five, forty-five.
Did I get a copy of the ordinance? Oh, Sam. You got it, Lee.
Any questions for me?
I just wanted to make sure. No, but thank you.
Yes, we know the budgeting, and we talk about where we're gonna pay for people and our expenses, we need to make sure this gets done, so the distributions match.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Should we go ahead and read the ordinance now, or, and then we can suspend the rules?
Yeah, you can read it by title only, but my recommendation would be suspend the rules to consider our first reading, so.
Is everybody comfortable with that? Do you need to look at the ordinance or anything, or?
Let me have a copy. Yeah.
We don't have a copyright.
No. I just wanted to get the title thing, right? So then I'll send it down to you.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to suspend it, but I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm moving.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Let me read some of the.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Just so that everybody's aware. This is for the Boone County Council Ordinance number twenty, two thousand and twenty-four dash two. An ordinance of Boone County Council amending the percentage of the allocation of the money deposited into the Restricted Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, eleven seventy-three, and the Unrestricted Motor Vehicle Highway Fund of eleven seventy-six. So that, that is what this ordinance does, is redistributes, just as Jewel and Nick spoke about, so. Anything else? You're just.
Can I just skim it?
What's that?
Can I skim it?
Skim it, sure.
Sorry, I'm one of those people that reads all the fine print before I sign something.
I don't wanna say it, but thank you, Sherry.
Sorry.
You're good with it.
I trust Jewel, I just wanted to.
Just wanted to make sure everybody's felt comfortable and looked at, so I appreciate you looking through it. So with that being said, then we need a motion to suspend the rules to pass this on the first reading?
I'm with that we suspend the rules to pass the ordinance two zero two four oh two.
And technically, it will be a motion to suspend the rules to consider.
A motion to consider.
Correct. So this one, this vote will have to pass unanimously. So the general standard is an ordinance should have a vote, because it is the law of your county.
Right.
And so the suspension of the rules allows you to consider it, but the entire council unanimously has to vote to suspend the rules in order for them to be suspended. And because you're taking it out of the normal course of action, it has to pass by two-thirds of the majority of the entire group, so you have to have at least five people, regardless of how many people you had here, but five people have to vote in favor or against.
So your motion was to suspend the rules?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, I second that.
Yeah, the motion was to suspend the rules to consider passing ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two. Is there any other additional questions? All those in favor of suspending the rules, same by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, pass unanimously. So now we would need a motion to actually pass the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two.
I'm with the, we pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two.
Second.
It's been properly moved, a second, and passed ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two. Is there any other further discussion? If not, all those in favor, same by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Pass unanimously, also, thank you. And we have our next agenda item, we have got Casey Sampson. Would like to come and ask. Thanks, Casey.
Thanks, good morning, Councilman, I'm Casey Sampson, I'm the Center Township trustee. I'm coming here to ask if we could look into the Public Safety LIT distribution for Center Township. Center Township is the only unit of government that has a public safety department full-time that does not receive a single penny of the Public Safety LIT. When that was passed a few years ago, townships were not included by statute to participate in that, and that has been changed in years past, and including in this year's legislation, it actually included where we can ask before the council, before July first, to be included in that budget workshop to do that. So that's basically what I'm doing here today, that Public Safety LIT distribution, we're not asking for an additional tax burden on the taxpayers, we're looking to collect that portion for our unit. So looking at it from DLGF and looking at calculations that are above, it's approximately a hundred eighty thousand is what we're looking to capture from that. Again, that's using that same formula, which is about point five four two seven percent of the certified shares.
What was that percent again, Casey?
I believe it's point five four two seven. And that is of the certified shares. So that's of the certified shares of the citizens in Center Township that are not inside corporate boundaries of another municipality, that's only the, you know, the unincorporated areas of Center Township. And so we're looking to reduce the tax burden on the current Center Township residents to have that fire service, and then to have a little bit of improvements made with that Public Safety LIT. Again, that's already being captured from those residents that are living in that area, that it's coming right out of their paycheck, and in a way, they're not receiving those taxes. They are receiving, obviously, the law enforcement side, but that, that fireside, they are not. So I know there's gonna be a lot more further discussion on this, on how it has to be calculated, but just going off of this year's numbers, and each year that number changes, that, that exact number, dollar amount changes, but that's what we're kinda looking at for today.
So Casey asked to, to be here today, and so I, I told him he could come and, and, you know, make a little ask, but we, during budget times, when we would actually consider something like this, and I also let him know that the Public Safety Lit, the Sheriff's Department has, you know, is using basically every bit of it, but during budget times, we'll, we'll look and see if there's anything, but I couldn't encourage him that there is, but he does have the right to ask, so. And that's what he's doing here today, and that we will take it up during the budget time and see if there's anything.
Casey, thanks for coming. One question I had, you mentioned that those unincorporated taxpayers are getting law enforcement but not fire, so what do you mean by that? They are getting.
They're getting the distribution of the Public Safety LIT. So they're receiving that benefit, so when they, when they have that Public Safety LIT taken out of their paycheck, right, that they're receiving the police department side, but not the fireside.
Who's taking, who's taking care of the fireside?
With the Center Township, we'd be clear, we're providing the services. We're not getting the distribution of our, our share of that distribution.
What improvements were you wanting to make?
Staffing would be one of our main ones. We've, we've made a lot of improvements in the last year. Unfortunately, the, the department was fairly neglected for the last ten, fifteen years, and so we've made significant improvements by improving, buying a new engine, buying new gear. But gear comes in, it's pretty expensive, it's about ten thousand dollars a set, and we, we have a lot of members. We have six full-time firefighters, and somewhere between fifteen and twelve and fifteen part-time, depending on, on, you know, Eddin Flow's a part-time appointment. So that, that gear cycle is a constant change. So those would be some of the improvements that would be made, and additional staffing.
What about your rainy day fund?
So we do, we do have the rainy day fund, but what we're, we also don't want to deplete all of our funds for one-time purchases, you know, I think it's important that the Public Safety LIT was established as an ongoing fund to help support the public safety departments, and that's what we're looking for, is that additional support and not a complete funding change.
Or, if you've been to any of our meetings before, we're really bad, big on collaborating, so have you talked to Lebanon at all to see what they're willing to do with you?
We, I, we have had those discussions in the past. It's, in my opinion, we, we are, and we're in the best position to continue the direction that we're going, it's two separate entities at this time. We, we continue to work together on a scene basis, on a run basis, but in terms of a financial basis, you know, I, I think those operational costs aren't going to be much savings to the taxpayers, certainly when we're asking only for the Public Safety LIT, which is already being collected and not distributed to our department.
And what's your, the advisory board's position?
That, we're, and we're in the beginning stages of this, because the advisory board will help, once we approve the budget, I can't set the budget until I know what kind of funds we're looking at. So we've had this discussion with the advisory board in the past, that we do not collect this, and it is something that we could be or should be entitled to. So with, without having this discussion first, it's kind of hard to move into other discussions on how we can divide or what exact amount we can reduce from the LIT shares that we currently use to help fund the department versus the Public Safety LIT shares.
So your advisory board thinks that you should be coming to us to ask for this portion?
I, I can't say that they think or, or don't think, that, that, I didn't, I don't have to, I can't do anything with our budget, which is my ultimate job is to create the budget, they approve the budget. I need to make sure what avenues I have available to me as terms of revenue before I can do that. So if I can come to the board and say, hey, we have this, would we like to do option A, option B, option C, that is where I, I think that the advisory board comes into play with, in terms of how we fund those specific funds.
And then, sorry, I'm asking a lot of questions.
Don't worry.
How many more staff do you think you need to hire?
Well, you know, the, the exacting of VA code sits behind us at this moment, but it ideally is four on an apparatus. Right now, we have three, we have two full-time and one part-time. That part-time person works twelve-hour shifts, and they, they work, basically, a prime twelve and a pack twelve, and that fills that seat, three, you know, three out of four seats. I have both the assistant chief and the fire chief here, if you have any questions regarding operations.
Approximately how many runs per day do you do?
I'll refer to them on that, I'm not sure.
Mr. Sampson, I have a question for you.
Sure.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was in twenty seventeen when we passed the LIT, I think it's somewhere. Excuse me. And you had mentioned that at that time, the state statute didn't have anything set up with respect to township governments getting any part of that LIT dollars that were being collected. And then you had mentioned that it had changed, so my question is, why did it change? And when it did change, does it allow county councils across the state of Indiana, are they the ones that control the purse strings across the state, not just Boone County, but the other ninety-one included? Are they the ones that say, okay, we can give you this much out of the LITs?
You know, I'm, I'm not an attorney, didn't take it on TV either, but from what I understand, that it did change, I believe, a couple of years later, and why they changed that, the Indiana Traffic Association went to legislators and expressed that fire, or trustees have a fire protection responsibility across the state of Indiana, there's a thousand and nine townships, and a good majority of them either have their own fire department or contract with another area fire department to do that. And when they do that, they, they can only fund those through their certified shares of unincorporated taxpayers. Having this additional fund allows townships, allowing townships to, to tap into this additional funds allows townships to potentially reduce that tax burden on individual taxpayers, property owners, and I think that's why the legislature obviously moved forward to, to make that change, including this year, which is requiring the council here.
It was actually changed in a House bill within the last year?
Within the last year.
It was a House bill.
House bill.
And are, are you aware of any other counties, maybe Donut Counties, touching Boone County, that have decided, we as a council need to give money to these individuals, because they're deserving of it?
Specifics, no, but exact, but, but in talks with the ITA, it has been done across the county, sorry, across the state, not the county, and our, our representation has represented a couple of different townships that have asked and received LIT shares.
And when we begin our budget talks, am I correct, that you're, you're asking for a hundred eighty thousand?
The exact amount, I think it's fair to say whatever that metric is, I'm not gonna ask for anything more than what any other unit of government that's, has a public safety department is, is entitled to. So I'm, I'm just asking for our fair share of this fund.
But also, from what I understand the way it works, that hundred and eighty, or whatever that percentage would be, comes off the top. It's not just out of our allocation. It comes off the top, and then the allocation continues from there. So everybody, so it impacts everyone. Every township and every entity gets a little bit less when each fire comes off the top.
So with that being said, it does seem.
Certain on that, when I spoke with our DLGF, she, she told me the exact opposite, that it wouldn't necessarily reduce the percentage.
That's the way the House bill reads, so I don't, I mean.
So there's.
State order can be different.
I guess with that, if that's accurate, then it does make sense, at least to me, I don't know what anyone else's thoughts are on this, maybe there need to be some more discussions with Lebanon. Like, sorry, did you know how many calls per day you guys are doing?
There's not a set number, I mean, no department has a certain amount of runs per day. I mean, as of today, we've had three so far, but some days there could be nine, some days there could be five, six.
Do you know how many you've done this year?
Uh, right now, we're a hundred and sixty.
I think it's also important to know from our discussions that we've had in terms of runs, the different types of runs that you have to. You have, you have, you know, a lot of fire departments, you know, especially in cities and municipalities, have a very high run percentage that are EMS-only, and when you have, we, we do not have ambulants, we use for Center Township, we use Boone County Mass, but we don't, we don't run ambulance call either, and so where someone like Zionsville may have, you know, many more runs at our department, it's not an apple to oranges, or it is an apples, which is why she said at that point, as a comparison.
But the expansion of Lebanon, how many square miles do you cover there?
Uh, roughly, still about, square miles about thirty.
That's percent, percentage-wise, is that a Boone County, square miles?
Percentage of Boone County.
Square.
I would.
I mean, they, they keep expanding out, your church roof keeps shrinking.
And I think that's, that, that is a very valid point, that, and that's why, and again, I would like to see a reduction for our taxpayers, or proper taxpayers that are paying already. So I think in a way that sometimes those taxpayers are getting hit twice with, through their fire fund and through the Public Safety LIT.
Has your, so has your territory actually decreased with Lebanon and their annexation and what has happened?
So it, I mean, I think the actual geographic area and in terms of taxation or distribution has, and value has, has changed, but the, the amount coming in to our distribution necessarily hasn't. A lot of it's all rural too, it's a lot of farmland, it's a lot of empty land that would didn't have houses or buildings, there were certainly some houses and buildings in that area, but there's still quite a few that are even in, within the lead district that are still unincorporated too.
Yeah, what, what, how many townships do you really service? It's not just Center Township.
We, we actually do just service Center Township.
You don't take care of Clinton Township?
We do not have a contract.
Oh, you don't contract?
I believe there's some mutual aid agreements, I'm not sure on the exact departments or what that is, but.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and my other question is, I think Councilman Hossiter hit the nail on the head. When you think about it from a safety, which is probably the core piece, what, what's your fire, kind of like your rating, like what, like the service that you guys provide compared to that of like eleven?
I'm not sure what's your.
So isn't there a rating that you get, like, based on the service that you provide?
That's, I'm, 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 I'm gonna go to speak for that. Um, there's an insurance rating that some places use. Our last evaluation was before I was in there, I haven't found, I haven't gotten paid work on what it was, I've heard that it was pretty bad, but we're in the process of getting that fixed, we're going through that process hopefully here shortly, and fixing all those mistakes that were happening back in the, the, the last.
Right.
Past, past ten years, I guess, probably, so.
Well, the only reason I bring it up is this, the conversation that you and your board would have to have with, you know, the powers that be at Lebanon. I, I look at it, and the, and the point is, not trying to force you to do anything, you have a department that is larger, and, but again, I come from the Marion County side, where I was there seeing unit of government things happen, because allocation is not a horrible thing, it's a decision that you all have to make, you do have a department that has the means, the manpower, the resources that you're lacking, that you're saying?
I, I'm, I'm just clarifying, we're not, we're not, we're not lacking, you know, it's just that we're trying to reduce the tax burden that's already there. So with Lebanon supporting their LIT, that's all we're asking to, to, Zionsville supporting their department with their LIT shares, that's all we're trying to do.
Thank you.
How much is in your rainy day fund?
Approximately three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. So with that.
So I, what I was gonna say, we also had an ask from Jim Caldwell at, at Vance Fire early on, so, you know, they, they put their ask in, and that's what they need to do.
Yeah.
And then during budget time, we need to look at, you know, and like I said, most of, all of our lit funds are actually allocated right now, and, but we just need to make sure what we're doing and move on from there, so.
Yeah.
We appreciate your ask and appreciate you coming, but we'll be taking this up at budget times.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie, what was, do you know the House bill number that you made reference to?
Um, no, but I can, I have it in my email, it's like.
Casey, you know that number, don't you?
It's Senate Bill thirty-three, actually.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is reappropriations, area plan commission, if you don't speak on that, Debbie? Somebody?
John?
You don't think about John?
This was brought up in the commissioner meeting two months ago. They have an interim director for area plan, and they are needing to move what was in Stevens' salary line to the consulting line to pay for the consultant. Deb was there, I believe, is her name?
So this time, I mean, we have discussion, but we would need a motion to actually transfer those funds as indicated.
I'm sorry, could we hear the numbers?
Excuse me?
Could we hear numbers?
On, what are you, in the number?
Forty thousand for this.
Yeah.
To the consulting.
Yeah, so I, I would make a motion that we reappropriate for area plan forty thousand dollars from one zero 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 point zero one zero one point three one 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 two, one zero 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 point zero one zero one point three one three six.
It's been properly moved, is there a second?
A second.
It's been properly moved, a second, to move forty thousand of, of the, the funds? Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, same by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you, pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Just wanted to get that through.
Have they started yet? Deb started working this, yes, she has.
We need to be able to.
Under old business, Nick Parr.
Nick Parr, Boone County Highway. Discussed, I think, at a few meetings and various different times of conversation about our administrative situation at the highway department and the need for additional personnel. There has been an update regarding how we could hire a full-time person. The day that that person started, the other individual that was full-time submitted resignation. So we're, at least have a full-time person, starting at ground zero, was able to get the highway worker back, helping with the chipping seal just started this week, so kind of letting our new admin person kind of trial by fire at this point. So the previous discussions that we had, I had to come back and talk to council in order to be able to fill a role with anyone. And at the time was, we went from one full-time, one part-time to two full-time, um, and then had to come back to what we're gonna do next. So that's the reason for me being here today is what's gonna happen next and be able to fill the position that I have in the administrative role. So.
With, with that, I spoke to Nick a little bit. My thoughts and recommendation is that we get it back to the way it was with one part-time, one full-time. There won't be any additional funds that have to be moved around, the funds are, are there in place, uh, so. But that, that would be my recommendation to get it, get him back whole the way it was at the beginning of the budget cycle. And then, uh, during the budget time, uh, I think Nick might, and I don't know what you're gonna be doing, but you might ask for two full-time. I don't, I don't know that, but I'd like to get him back to, to be in whole way the budget was at the beginning. And that was really our goal, was to see if we could get him back to the full-time, part-time.
Yeah, so that's the, the question is that it kind of leaves lingering in a person that you're hiring is what am I hiring you for? Uh, when we hired, when we looked for part-time, we got about ten applications in about three weeks. We hired full-time, got about fifty-two applications in the same amount of time. Of the ten applications we received for part-time, nine of them went in full-time. Or they would take the hours, they just wanted the benefits and it was something that we couldn't offer. So what are we asking for? We're gonna post it for part-time, I want to be crystal clear on what I'm asking for and what the expectations are of these individuals that will be then leaving a current job to come to this job. So the challenge is with having no one is when somebody takes off, there's back to nobody in there. And then, you know, every day we have, still a learning process. So it's a, needing some, some continuity and there's something continuous that we, we, we're definitely searching for.
Hopefully you'll have that now with your full-time person.
That's the ideal situation. We hired a very good one, I think it's gonna be great, but we're, you know, three weeks in. So it's, going into budget time and a lot of things that we've got to be able to pull and figure out, um, getting, getting help, if there's great. So if part-time is the, the avenue forward, I just want some clarity on what it is I'm posting for, for the job opening. So that's what I'm looking for.
I think to get you back whole, I think that's what we need to do at this point in time, then we can move forward with another request if you have in the future.
Okay, so do we need to move any money? We move money from the part-time line to the full-time line in order to?
You can continue to pay a part-time person out of your full-time line, it doesn't matter.
Okay. So that would be the direction, I guess, we're looking for, to proceed with that.
Cause you don't have to move, like you said.
Unless he want, I mean, it's up to him whether he wants that differentiation, but.
We don't have to move any, but we wouldn't have to move any money?
It was just re-appropriated before, it's in the same series anyway, so we move from the part-time to the full-time.
But it's a salary line, so it would have to come back in front of you.
Would that come back in July?
So Nick, what else, uh, I, I just wanna make sure, what else do you want from us in today's meeting? Because you, you want us to say, yes, it's okay, part-time. I, I just wanna make sure.
Sherry was gone in the last meeting.
I missed, I missed the last meeting.
Oh.
So I, I get a little bit of a pass, guys.
A motion was made that if this administration situation changed, that we'd come back and talk to council before we filled the position.
Got it.
And whether that person would be a full-time person or a part-time person that we replaced. So we went to two full-time.
Got it.
With the string attached that if that person left, that we would have to come back and talk to council, whether to fill it with full-time or part-time.
It is clear as anything.
Yeah.
I feel so much more.
I think what you're saying is ideally it would be two full-time people.
That's what the position needs, that's what we have with the federal aid projects, the community crossing projects, everything that we got going on, the invoicing that goes along with those, the reimbursements. There's a lot to ask one person to understand all that and be able to do all that as well as all of our daily work, tickets and reports that come in from all of our thirty guys that go out and do something every day. So it's, it's a lot to do, even new person coming in, I'm like, hold on, I don't wanna, you know, dump the truckload of material and hope you can find your way out, it's just a lot.
So with that, do we have a motion? To get it back to the way it was?
The.
Part-time, full-time?
John.
Motion.
Yep, so move.
John made a motion, uh, I'll try to restate it.
You clarify.
Clarify it for you, that, to, to get it back to the way it was, uh, with the start of the budget with one part-time and one full-time employee in the administration. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say if I said aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Thanks, Nick, appreciate it. Budget timeline, I know that, uh, most everybody is, is working with their, uh, departments to schedule meetings. Uh, so we need to continue with that, get that done. Debbie, is there anything else that we?
I just recommend you guys have them done by the twenty-fifth, if at all possible, we'll pull the information that week and then they'll have fifteen days to get their form ones back to us, which is a lot shorter than normal. So with the holiday in there, it's gonna be a little crunch time for people, but.
Yeah, I would just say in the meetings that we've already, that I've set up, uh, and or had, some vacations are obviously popular right now. So we may be literally, some of our meetings are gonna be all the way up to the fifteenth, so don't, don't get nervous.
Twenty-fifth.
For twenty-fifth, okay.
I don't care about the fifteenth.
Okay, so the twenty-fifth of July.
Jim.
I mean, okay. Hold on.
You're done July first, Sherry.
Well.
You're out of your question until I get all the information back.
Well, then what do we do if we, I had a meeting this week and vacations preclude us from getting back together? I mean, should we just electronically do our best?
You can't, I mean, you can still have your meeting, but they're already gonna have filled out their form ones by the time you meet, if it's in July.
Okay.
But, but don't, if, if you can't, like Debbie said, go ahead and meet with them even after the twenty-fifth, even after they fill out the form ones, just so that you can get understanding.
Got it, that's, that's the plan, I just wanna make sure, again, you miss one month and it's just amazing. You feel a little lonely back here.
Debbie, that form one, uh, uh, form, you send it out to each one of the elected officials in departments, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item of business is the capital improvement plan with Baker Tilly.
Well, after working on that, um, I'm Susan Reed, I'm here with Alex McKinney, we're gonna tag team this. I'm just gonna introduce it and, and close, um, please do the closing slide, but Alex did a lot of the work or presented department heads on collecting information and identifying the funds and compiling all this, this report itself. So really, um, just as a recap, Baker Tilly was engaged, uh, last year in two thousand and twenty-three to do this, the CIP.
Karen, can we get the, the, Karen, can we get that last, that, the echo off for now? Is there a way to?
I need it all.
I mean, I wanna hear Susan, but maybe not twice.
Understood.
Thank you.
And the capital improvement plan is a five-year plan, uh, that does identify funding sources. As we started that process, um, and started talking to the council about doing that, the, the county commissioners were also working on the facilities, um, master plan with K two M. And, let me see. Yeah, just so we have it up on the right slide. Um, and essentially we ended up waiting for the completion of that to see how much of it should be incorporated into this plan, um, as well. And really, as you may recall, a part of, um, S and P Global, the writing agencies, um, considerations in the county's rating is its financial management assessment. And really, there's different things that go into that assessment. One of those things is having a capital improvement plan in place that's updated on a regular basis, uh, having a financial plan in place. And you also do that, um, that has at least five years of information incorporated into that, which you also do. Um, and then that you have the debt policy and reserve policy, we did that as, as well earlier this year. And, um, those have been put in place as well. So really doing all the right things, um, you know, from a, from just a good management perspective. So the capital improvement plan itself, really what that does is it allows department heads, um, to determine prioritization of projects. Um, and when they'll be addressed, it informs the budgeting process, which you're getting ready to do, which will be great, um, as well. And it can be incorporated into the, the budget and really to look at optimization of debt as well and the use of cash. And then in coordination with the comprehensive financial plan, which are in the process of completing, uh, Baker Tilly. The other Susan, Susan Covlin and Andrew Stoll are working on that for you right now. Um, it identifies available funding sources to support the projects and maintain a balanced budget while maintaining your reserves and, um, your tax rate targets. I am echoing, so you do give me twice, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I didn't know we could do anything with that.
So really, um, I'm gonna turn this over to Alex. I did want to just, before I turn it over, wanted to also just recognize, um, that, that Ken and Sherry and Debbie and also, um, Jeff Wolf and, um, and Donnie Lawson, Lawson, um, all participated in this process and we really appreciate that, it really helped, um, pull this together. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over.
So, yeah, at the beginning of the CIP process, I reached out to the department heads to identify capital projects, over ten thousand dollars with a useful life of at least two years. Certain projects that only have, or certain departments only had needs for certain years and you can see that also, um, certain departments have ongoing needs. So we've really tried to capture all of that from, from the department heads. Projects that we gathered include vehicle replacements, um, all the way to equipment in vehicles for the sheriff's department and various, um, road equipment and bridge projects for the highway department. Continuing down to the next page, um, the summary of funds.
They're, they're not, are you advancing?
Okay.
It's there, it's that summary of funds piece, and if you actually turn to page five of the report that you have in front of you, it's the same table that's there.
So.
What is here to read on your report?
Yeah. So, looking at that summary of funds identified for projects shows the same information, um, just showing the impact on the funds. We've separated out the grant money that's anticipated to be used for highway projects, just to show, um, where those plug in and where, um, local matching funds or bond proceeds would be used for those projects. We have attached a list of additional grant, state and federal grants to the CIP as an appendix, um, that the county may wish to consider in the future. Uh, I'd also like to point out that of the projects we gathered, nothing is being pulled from the general fund past after twenty twenty-five. You can also see that there's a line of TBD, those are maintenance projects from the K two M facility study.
Where's, where's the TBD?
At the very bottom.
Sorry, thank you.
Last of them. So those were maintenance projects from the K two M facilities study, um, that were recommend, recommended. There's not specific plans at this time for those, but we did want to make sure to incorporate that into the CIP, so that's, so that, that awareness is there.
So I see, I'm sorry, I see, I see on page seven on some of these, all it says TBD, I see where it says like window replacement, stone replacement. Flip, go flip right at the bottom where it says, uh, facilities K two M maintenance.
Correct.
So is that where these costs were coming from?
Correct, I think, I think the windows are on the courthouse, but we planned that out over a few years, I believe.
Is that, but it's. The stone, is that where these, but, right, but I'm saying, for these TBD, these costs that are associated with it, what are the actual projects? Are these just?
That's, the, the, the ones that are under TBD are from the K two M plan, so the specifics on that are spelled out in the K two M study.
But not in this report?
But not in this report.
Okay.
Okay. Which, I think you've looked, I know that, um.
Actually, if, if you wanna see it in more detail, like H two, um, they're there, in the back, it's in it. And really the detail back there of all those projects is summarized.
Yeah.
We'll also give this file in, in electronic form to, um, to Debbie. Is anybody else who wants it?
Actually, yeah, can we get it, can we all get it?
So the, the ongoing maintenance from the K two M study was just something that we wanted to make it hard to include in the report just for planning purposes.
We just include preferred maintenance for the new jail?
I'm not sure. So that was what targeted K two M plan that we did incorporate into the CIP just for awareness. And, um, as I was saying, the general fund doesn't have any projects currently beyond twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So that's something, as those projects develop, that's the general fund might be able to support. And then there's also, in the K two M plan, there's four options for longer-term major facilities projects, um, to really address the county's space and facilities needs. Those major projects are still under discussion or fairly, very early discussions, so those major projects are not incorporated into the CIP. Just because those are still, really, no decision has been made on those. Then in the capital requests, we did also receive some non-capital projects for twenty twenty-five from the area plan commission. Those are, are included in the project request summaries in the beginning of the report. Um, but we did also attach those to the back of the CIP as an appendix just for awareness. So that involves, um, updates to, uh, the comprehensive plan as well as zoning ordinances and subdivision control. And with that, Susan has some, uh, closing analysis.
Yeah. No, obviously, you have your distinct questions, but, um, really overall, as Alex mentioned, the requested projects can be supported by the combination of the use of funds and future bonding. We did do some, um, bonding analysis as well that's included in the report that Brian Fulton prepared. And the actual funding sources can also be modified through the comprehensive financial planning process. And we have provided this already to, um, our group is working on that to Susan and Andrew and they are incorporating that into what they're doing, um, you know, in, ahead of budgeting. Also, the highway department, yeah, Nick has always been active, you know, in monitoring, um, the needs for the highway department utilizing cash, grants and bond proceeds. And we did see that the cumulative bridge fund will just need to be monitored beyond twenty twenty-five, um, for supporting projects. But again, it's really active, actively monitored anyway. Um, the sheriff department's request to you may need to be, look, may need to look at different capital outlays in twenty twenty-five from, um, the fund that was identified through the ninety-one-one fund. Um, and really, it depends kind of on how, again, those projects are paid for, a lot of those are, are equipment requests, they may be leases that wouldn't require the, you know, the entire capital outlay in that year. And then finally, again, as Alex mentioned, the general fund has some capacity to support identified projects. So you may wanna consider using some of the reserves that you have that are healthy, just need to really keep in mind your, um, your reserve targets. And then even, even maybe keeping it, uh, some money above the reserve target to just really protect. So. Good information, it's certainly helpful how all that pulled together, um, again, S and P just wants you to update on, on a going basis, at least in your lay.
Susan, uh, can we ask some questions now?
Sure.
Uh, first of all, thank you both for this. I was one of the people that was barking quite loudly when I first got on here to Elise, who's not here to defend herself now, but, uh, about the need for this because I just, I think it helps us as a body to work with the commissioners and, and the taxpayers about, you know, what, what we're doing and with Debbie to say, hey, let's get a plan and let this, this helps, this helps, so thank you. With that, um, a couple of things that I noted, uh, first of all. With that, a couple of things that I noted, first of all, 65 million out of 95 million is highway, if you look at, you know, so 70%-ish is Nick Parr, which is no surprise to the veterans that are on this council and, and for me in the first year. And with that, I guess Kenny and my fellow counselors, I mean, I think the highway, again, is just, it's screaming at us as, as council members, what can we do over the next two to five years in terms of lobbying, in terms of, you know, getting with our legislators to, to talk about how we're going to fund this? Because embedded in this report, as you said, there are different bonding analysis, you know, different, how, how might we fund these projects? And obviously, we can't rely on debt to do all this, and, and there aren't enough grants, so I'm just wondering, in your other scenarios, this is one question, I have a couple, sorry, what do we do as a council to plan for helping Nick and our county, you know, adequately prepare for, pay for what we know is going to be a huge influx of people, we're the second fastest growing county, and based on our current legislative status, I, I just, I don't know how we're gonna do it. How, what, what can we take, this is, this is part of the reason we wanted to do this report, is to figure out what we can do strategically and tactically to help make sure that we have the best roads, that we have the best, let me, let me let you respond.
Sure, I'll try. And it's, it's not unique, you know, to need more money for funding for roads in the state of Indiana, however, you know, the county obviously isn't at growth mode, which will have increased pressure. I think really, this is probably the answer that you want, but.
That's okay.
You know, collecting all the information that you're doing right now, even Nick is really, really good at identifying the needs of the county.
Right.
And actively doing that, so having the list of what you need, what the growth, what impact that's going to place on your roads.
Right.
And looking at the funding that's available and any shortfalls, and maybe even how you can utilize funds from other fund, funding sources within the county's budget that you wouldn't traditionally access for roads.
Okay.
Might be something that you look at doing.
Okay.
You know, and certainly then taking that to the legislature and saying, hey, we have all this growth, these are our, our, our needs for roads, you know, how might we, how might we tackle these? And having those active conversations with and to, you know, would be, would be, but in addition to looking at the grant funding.
Right.
There's a phenomenal amount of grant money available right now.
The second, okay, thank you. The second question I had is when I sat down with facilities earlier this week, and we started talking about the budget, I, I don't, I wonder if we're missing an opportunity here, and again, it was just our first preliminary meeting with Max and Lori, but because we've done this work, we were sitting there talking, and I said, you know, Max, what's, you know, what's beyond this year? Is there a spreadsheet that we should take from this and, and go to each of our budget meetings with to not just focus myopically on 2025, but to also, again, if in my old job, this is what, we would have, we would have taken this information and gone to each of our liaisons and said, okay, obviously, we've got deadlines from Debbie, we have to get 2025 done, but let's not be ignorant to 2026 and, and beyond from this report to say, let's start planning, let's start making sure that we know what the deferred maintenance is going to be on the new jail, so that we know what the maintenance piece of the lit is going to have to cut, I mean, I, I just want to make sure as a council, we're, we're taking this information that's robust and using it in a timely manner, and Debbie, if you want to pipe in with thoughts here too, I just want to make sure, because I don't think we've had, I don't think we've had that discussion as a council yet, because we, we're just now getting this.
Yeah.
And now we're in budget time, so what, what are your thoughts there?
I mean, that's exactly what you should be doing, using this as a tool, if there's things, you know, the county obviously has needs that shift.
Right.
So if there's things that are in here, or not in here rather, or maybe aren't the highest priority when you do sit down, you know, with those departments.
Yeah.
You know, adding that in.
Okay.
Actively, I mean, you should, and it's not hard to do that. Using this more as a dynamic tool is, is how it should be utilized.
Okay. Debbie, did you have any thoughts on that about as we're meeting with our liaisons? No? But you understand what we're saying?
Nothing I should say.
But I mean, if we're gonna be.
There's just a lot more knowledge that you guys need to know about things that the Justice Center provides us, what, what needs to take place after it's completed, what, I mean, there's just a lot of questions.
Right.
That aren't being asked nor interviewed.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would say, I think Sher's teamed it up, there was a, a survey that was put together for all of the departments, and it asked what she's asking, was it for the next three to five years, what do you anticipate, what are the needs, and it goes into that specific question that Sher's asking you. I did have a chance to be with the Sheriff's Department, and to Debbie's point, you know, there are a lot of things that we just don't know, but if the departments are giving us that information, it will help us with this tremendously, like, what are you anticipating over the next three to five years? And those answers are being computed into a spreadsheet that we'll be able to look at during the budget process, and that Debbie and her team will be able to go back and look at and revert to to say, all right, here's what we're anticipating, here's what we're planning. There won't be a ton of financial information immediately, but using that with this combined will help us know, like, this is what we're anticipating, this is what we're planning for, this is a good benchmark for us to start, but also, like Debbie said, when it comes to things like the Justice, excuse me, like the Justice Center as an example, I think there are costs that are in here that are a good benchmark, there are a ton of unknowns that are going to shock our budget, and it is going to really set us for a reality check.
And to that point, Aaron, in my conversations with Max, with facilities, we talked about a possible, and again, I haven't talked to you or Kenny about this, but would love to get your thoughts, but maybe having Community Corrections, the Sheriff's Department, and Maintenance together, along with Debbie, the Commissioners, or at least a Commissioner, and some of our, our group here to, that's, that's involved as a liaison for those three areas, would it make sense that we convene a meeting, Debbie and Aaron and Kenny, to, to talk about what the lit covers, so that Max knows what he's got to use CCD for and what's he's going to get from lit or not, and what, what, you know, Tony's going to be able to count on in terms of his maintenance, I mean, or, or has that already happened? That, that hasn't happened.
Because Max doesn't get lit money, so.
Kenny, do you have any?
Those conversations definitely have to.
Yeah, no, I think it's great.
That's a great idea.
Well, and again, I, it came up in earlier, last week with, with Max, and I just thought, if that hasn't happened, maybe we could figure out a way to do that.
Yeah.
Because I think people are wanting clarity, Max doesn't know, and I'm not sure Tony knows, or, or Community Corrections knows, how much of that lit spells out, what's the clarity on what, who gets what, and again, I think everybody's going to be reaching.
Well, Jennifer and I were literally just talking earlier today, like, I'm meeting, we're meeting with the Sheriff's Department to go over their budget, and then right behind that, I'm like, hey, I'll give you those numbers, just so we can talk about the Community Corrections piece, just because they coincide with each other.
Yeah.
And then Dan and I were talking, because he's like, hey, how do we all, the conversations that happen in pockets, but like you said, coming together, I think that's the key component of it.
So maybe after this.
But also, nobody's going to get that money.
I know.
That money has to stay in that fund, so you're gonna have to share.
Right, right, and I, that's a better way to say it.
Yeah, I mean, nobody's gonna get a bundle of that money.
Right.
It has to stay in that fund, and then we have to figure out a way to support the Sheriff's Department facilities if it needs to be, those different.
Right, and in the spirit of our budget process and the timing, Debbie, would we need to have that meeting before the 25th of June?
Preferably, only because that fund has never truly been looked at, it's always been under the purview of the Commissioners.
Okay.
And with the jail being finished supposedly by March is what I'm hearing, we're, we're gonna have to do some, some real budgeting.
Some real.
So Kenny, Kenny, should we look to you to coordinate that meeting, or is that a Debbie or?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
But we also have to remember, those departments aren't going to be able to have all their asks up front.
Right.
Yes, we're, we're gonna have a complete Justice Center completed, but.
Right.
We're not going to be able to support 1.2 million people in payroll for Community Corrections during, during 2025.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's gonna have to happen over.
Okay.
The three years.
To work into.
I, I.
So with, with what we've got here, what would, what's our next step? What do we need?
So keeping this, I, you know, looking at it on an ongoing basis, at least annually, again, if you're looking at it from a rating perspective, that's what they're going to see, this can be folded into the comprehensive financial plan that's being done now too. And so I guess I would encourage you, if you do get good information that you claim that you think you would want to incorporate in that, also give that to Susan and Andrew so we can incorporate that too.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask one last?
Please.
What is our next rating? When is it anticipated from, because I know our analyst, I think is out of Chicago.
Um, I think, yeah, I, actually, I, I thought your analyst was out of Chicago, but like, when I did research, it was Maureen, and she's based in New York, but it's really only when you go back out for debt, so if the county were going to issue debt in 2025, that's when, you know, that, that would be.
That's when they look at it.
Yeah, unless the rating agency decides to do surveillance.
Surveillance, okay, all right, okay, all right.
Well, we can communicate, we should send them the, the policies.
That's what I was saying, can we send them just as an FI?
Absolutely, yeah.
Put a nice little bow on it.
Yeah, it's okay, and we, we, I, I, Maureen was actually in for, we hosted a public finance summit, she was in for that, and maybe, maybe coming back to the area, so if she does, you know, to just hang around the county to see everything is, is always good, and chairman, some of the great things are happening.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Sorry.
Any public comment?
Morning, Council, Mayor Matt Jeter-Stielman, just wanted to give you guys a little bit of context for the discussions earlier about the center township, the disbursement request. You know, we've been talking about trying to unify center township and level of fire for my entire time as mayor, two different trustees, we've had discussions, we've done close several times. You know, we've actually, you know, center township's fire budget's about 1.2 million dollars, we offer to provide services to the township around 600,000. So just want to put that in the framework and caution you guys, if you're talking about reducing every community that receives lit's share, because that's how that would work, it would take every piece from everybody, there's actually a very easy solution today to, to actually solve the financial challenges the center township has had from a budget perspective. So that's another, we're still willing to have these conversations, that door has not been closed, I say Lebanon, you know, we offer to do a fire board, share oversight of the fire department, you know, we plan to hire all of the full-time staff over, you know, all these things, we're, we're trying to find a solution there, so just want to keep, have you know that in your mind as you're talking about, if you choose to kind of offer them a share of the lit, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When was the latest rounds of conversation that you all had?
We had conversations early in trustee Sampson's term, and essentially, he said he wasn't interested at all, and so certainly those were for Lebanon, so larger annexations that have happened, and I'm sure now he's starting to feel some of the pressure on his budget, right, and, and obviously, it's, you know, for perspective, you know, Lebanon, we do about 12, we ran about 1,200 runs already this year, right, so we're doing eight to 10 runs a day, you know, center township's averaging, you know, 160 days or so within the year, they're done about 160 runs, so we do about one run a day. And also, you average, and a lot of those are mutual aid runs and not actually within the corporate territories of, of center township, if you actually look at, it's mostly like 40, so it's only about a run every three days, actually within center township.
Mutual aid, meaning like with Lebanon?
Correct, yeah, so, so similarly, you know, we provide mutual aid, designs of White stown, you know, fire crews all kind of work together on, on those calls.
Do your fire runs include the ambulance aid runs?
Yeah, we generally go and respond and assist on.
Okay, so that's included in that, okay.
Do you anticipate trying to have those discussions again prior to our budget starts in August?
I'll be honest, I'm not optimistic, I've got a pretty clear indication from trustee Sampson that's not something he's interested in. From our perspective, we would love to have those conversations, that's not kind of where he is, I think, at this point, so I wouldn't blow my breath for that, but certainly the door from our side is open if it does what he wants to pursue.
Would you be willing to give us an update in August, if any of those discussions have happened since today?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, put your on the spot.
Sure.
Understanding you can't read Mr. Sampson's mind, but in your opinion, why would center township want to stay as they are, and then why do you as the mayor of Lebanon want to, and excuse the term, take over center township by any means?
Yeah, again, so I, I don't see it as a takeover, I see it as unification.
Okay.
Actually, prior to 1972, actually Lebanon fired, center township fired, Rushley House in St. Louis, so it's, for a long time, we had, you know, very close relationship, there weren't any issues, and then we kind of had just drifted, and as these departments have kind of developed, you know, Lebanon certainly has grown a lot, center township's kind of stayed about, about the same, and so I think, you know, to put myself in the trustee issues, certainly, you know, that, you know, fire protection is one of the main responsibilities of a township trustee, right, so I certainly understand that maybe if he sees that as giving that up, you know, that's something that he's afraid to do, or, or doesn't want to do, because, again, you know, we've offered, have a, a joint fire board where we both oversee the fire department together, you know, and so, I mean, there's, there's, I guess, a factor of control there, that maybe that he doesn't want to do that, but again, I, you know, I'm looking at it from a taxpayer effectiveness standpoint, right? You know, Lebanon's looking at doing a, a third station on the west side of town, center township already has a fire department there, I, I think both parties could, could, could benefit from this, and actually benefit where, where residents actually pay less for, for fire protection. But again, I, I, it's, you know, there's people in these decisions too, it's not just the, the numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Question that wasn't related to that at all. I wanted to ask Siri, I didn't want to interrupt their, their presentation, when you said 65 million of the 95 or something was the county, what was that? Is that based on all local dollars, or is that including federal dollars and community crossings?
Oh, you know what, it's on page five where they summarize the 95 million of five-year requests or identified projects, and if I add the 49 million local funds and then the 16 million grants supported, that's how I came up with the 65. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I haven't seen the report, so that's part of the, boys, I'm sitting down there, I can't really see the.
But 34% of what you do is still grant, which is huge.
Yeah, there's a lot of grant dollars included in that, and we have to have local dollars to get the grant dollars. So I just want a little clarification, federal dollars a lot is 80, 10, or 80, 20, 90.
Here's a extra copy that I made before today's.
34% of what you were spending is grant funded, which is, which is, to her point, the more grants you get, it brings that number down, like, there's a lot of grant opportunities, I think that's probably a huge avenue for us to pursue, is how to get more grant funding, whether it, probably whether it doesn't have to be as much matching, but 34% of what your, you know, budget is, is grant, so that's a huge piece.
And a lot of conversations with Alex, I was putting together, and there's a lot of spreadsheets involved, they go into it, I just wanted to get a.
I'm sure.
Clarification on what that number was that you had quoted, and then it, when I was going through the list of projects to submit, I had a lot of conversation with him, like, well, there's a lot more needs than this, but let's go for something that's fiscally possible, that we could administer grants, that we could go after, and things that could be constructed in that timeframe.
Well, and this also, I think, puts an exclamation point on your staffing issue, because who's going to write the grant?
We write them, if you're going to reimburse them, there's a lot of.
But I mean, I think that's important for us to note, because you, that, that, there's a lot, there's a lot for that person.
It'd be nice if they cut us a check, and we went and spent it, we can do the claims a lot easier, but then we have to go over reimbursements and chase the check through cancellation, or we can even ask for reimbursement.
Thank you.
Good. Thanks.
Appreciate it, Dan. Any other public comment? Motion?
It's moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second, can probably move the second to adjourn, always a favor, so let's say aye.
Aye.